This is the Good Government Show.
You know, you've got to believe in the process. If you don't believe in the process, then, you know, because people think my vote does not count.
Yes.
And it does count. Good government is open and transparent and communicates with people. I got my own excavating business. And so I'd go out and do different projects in the county to help local organizations. I love doing that. But you can change the world. You can make a difference in the future of our county. And that's the problem we have today. If you're not, if you're not a servant before you become elected, you'll never be a servant to the people.
Welcome to the Good Government Show. I'm your host, Dave Martin. On this episode, we're talking about youth, high school kids, teenagers, and how they're getting involved in government in Vermillion County, Indiana. Vermillion is in the western part of Indiana with Illinois as its western neighbor. Tim Yocum is the president of the Vermillion County Board of Commissioners. President Yocum created the Commissioners Mentoring Program. This is an award-winning program. Listen to this. We talk about how this was created to get students involved in local government. Listen to this excellent example of good government in action. As Tim will explain, this is a program that instills the ideas of good government to these young people who someday may be the county's next commissioners. Tim had some rough elections. We talked a little bit about that. In fact, he ran for state office. Although he didn't win that campaign, he continues to serve at the county level where he's even expanded the mentoring program. So coming up, my conversation with Vermillion County, Indiana Commissioner Tim Yocum, right after this. The Good Government Show is sponsored by OurCo. That means our community. OurCo has found a way to make government more effective. OurCo provides the OUR platform. And this is an app that blends in-person and digital interactions to connect people with their government, their county, their town, their state. The OurCo app transforms meaningful conversations into reliable data. They can turn results into projects and programs the community has essentially already approved. It's sort of like a flash poll by phone, but without the call and in real time. And wherever community members are, maybe they're at their house, or their office, or where they're out just talking about local issues. Maybe the choices between putting in more local buses or expanding the bike lanes. OurCo can get you an answer immediately. With OUR, you can engage your citizens or any group, learn what they want, and build programs and policies that advance your county, your job creators, your constituents. So visit OurCo.com, that's O-U-R-C-O dot com, and learn how they do it. And while you're there, book a demonstration. After you get done with this episode, hear more good government stories with our friends at How to Really Run a City, former mayors Kasim Reed of Atlanta and Michael Nutter of Philadelphia, and their co-host, journalist and author Larry Platt, talk with guests and other mayors about how to really get stuff done in cities around the nation. Check them out where you're listening now or through their nonprofit news site, thephiladelphiacitizen.org/podcasts.
My name is Tim Yocum. I'm president of the Commissioners of Vermaine County, Indiana. Our county is on the Illinois State Line halfway between Indianapolis and St. Louis, if you'd really want to look and see. That's about the area we're from.
And how are things there?
Things are great.
Things are great?
They're great.
Great. Okay, good. That's part of the, I guess, some people might call it the Rust Belt area. A lot of challenges. How are you dealing with those?
We're doing well. Times are good, and you've got to keep positive.
Better? Good.
You've got to keep positive.
All right.
And keep looking for a better day, and put positive hope out there for the future in our county.
And one of the things that we talked about a little bit before we turned the mics on and fixed the bikes, was you've got a program, it sounds like, that engages kids in government and gets them excited about government. How did this idea come together?
Well, it happened one day, I was thinking about our youth, and I've always been involved...
Because great ideas come in the shower, you know, pretty much.
They also come in bad times. I mean, moments of inspiration comes in bad times usually.
Yeah.
But a thought came to me, how do we promote our youth as future leaders and get them involved in local government?
Because kids don't know about local government. They know who the president is, but they don't know what county commissioners are, right?
Right. And they don't know the other offices. They don't know, they don't know why, when I grow up and I have to go do something about my tax bill, or I got to go see something about, I got a case filed against me, or they don't know where to go. They have no idea of how government looks.
And so what was the problem that you were trying to fix?
My problem was to promote a program that would, would open their understanding to government and how it works, and let them also be a part of the process of how government works.
And being a part of the process, that's got to be the most important part.
Correct.
Because you can say, oh, here's what we do, here's what we do. But, oh, yeah, okay. What was the reaction from your fellow commissioners, from other folks in government? And then what was the, what was the reaction from the people on the other side that, where the students were coming from?
It's all been positive. Every bit of it's been positive. We started at Local School Corporation.
There's no such thing as everybody being on board. So, was it?
Yeah. There's never been nothing negative said about the program.
Okay.
I mean, it's all good for anything for youth that educates the youth and promotes them in a positive light. And our school corporations is always good.
So what's the program?
Program is Commissioners Mentoring Program. And it was started about six years ago in our county. And we have two school corporations. We have a North of Vermaine and a South of Vermaine School Corporation. And we deal with those students there, and we let the teachers select one, or sometimes two, students to send them to our program.
And how often is this, every semester, every year?
We have meetings, two meetings a month, and we alternate between evening meetings and morning meetings. And we do it during the time the school's going on, because during the summer, you know, they're not available.
So every month, is it a new student every month that comes through?
Yes. Yes, new students.
Oh, so you've got like, what, I guess, maybe 10 a year that come through the program?
Well, it'd be half, half of nine months, so about five or six.
Okay.
You know, and we alternate back and forth between two school corporations.
Okay. Juniors, seniors, where are they in the...
They're usually juniors or seniors, usually seniors, because the juniors still have another year of possibility of being a part of it. So, but the school corporate...
And you might get a few voters.
Well, that's something else that happens.
As seniors.
When we get them there, we've also got programs where we promote youth in government as far as going to the schools and getting them registered to vote. We also do that. But in this program we do now with the Commissioners Mentoring Program, while they're in the courthouse, we, we go by the clerk's office, we ask them if they've been registered to vote. And if they haven't, we offer that opportunity for them, do it that day when they're there at the event.
Because you got them. You got...
Got them.
You got a captive audience.
And it's not, it's not a political party thing in our county.
Right.
When you register to vote, you have no party affiliation when you register. You don't have to proclaim our Democrat or Republican. You know, I mean, that's our, the rules of our state. So it's not something that we're trying to get them to join one organization or the other. It's just getting them registered, get them engaged.
So you've got a program, a Commissioners Mentor Program, and the schools pick the students.
Correct.
Do you know what they're looking for in the students?
Well, they're looking for students that possibly have aspirations in government.
Okay.
Or that are, that showed some type of, maybe in their economics class, or maybe in their government class, they say, hey, you know, and they see that student, you know. And that's just one of the big things that, that I see in all organizations today, is what are we doing with the future?
Right.
Someday someone's going to be taking my place. And how are we preparing that?
Someday, yes.
And in government today, there, it seems like there's so much of a disconnect of younger people in government.
Yep.
And, and I, to me, I like to find a future leader of our county, may state, maybe find a future president of the United States. You know, someone does that.
That, yeah, somebody, yeah.
And so it's in those youth, and the youth today...
Has Indiana ever had a president?
A good friend of mine was vice president, he was here recently, Mike Pence.
Okay. Prior to him? Benjamin Harrison? I don't know. I don't know how far back he could be.
Harrison, Harrison.
Okay, all right.
That's what I know for sure. And then Claude Matthews, I believe, was a governor. No, I'm going to governors now.
Okay.
But no.
All right.
But anyway...
So, so they're looking for students who are excelling in civics classes, government classes, economics classes. I'm sure you probably have a few people from the Student Council who show up for this.
Right.
And so what they get, what's the program? You, they, how do, how do they get, how do their parents drop them off? What happens?
Well, first of all, is the, that, once we have a name from the school.
Right.
Then I call the local Sheriff's Department, and I tell them, we've got a student that needs to be picked up at the flagpole at 8:45 a.m.
Okay.
On Tuesday morning.
Yes.
And they need to be there before 9:30, because Commissioners Court starts at 9:30.
All right.
And so the Sheriff's Department goes, picks them up. They get a ride in the Sheriff's Department car. They get a...
They have to sit in the backseat?
No, they get set front. They get set front. So they actually get some experience also about riding in a patrol car, which I think is kind of unique.
Sure.
For a young person.
Absolutely. By their choice.
By their choice.
So that makes it better. So what's the, what's the day you put them through?
Well, their day starts, as I said, being picked up by the local Sheriff's Department, which is a big deal. They're brought to the, and I meet them when they come and let them in and take them in. I bring them in and I have them set between me and the other commissioners for the actual meeting. They're not, they're not sitting in a crowd.
They're right up front of the day.
They're sitting right there. We give them all the paperwork everybody else got.
Okay.
Paperwork goes through, we hand it through. They, they gavel in the meeting, they start the meeting. We instruct them how to gavel a meeting in and call it to order.
Yep.
And so they're, they're active part of, of the conversation. Of course, they can't respond to anything going on there, but they, they do see everything going on.
I'm sure afterwards, they ask questions. What, what are the questions they ask you?
Well, there's so many questions they could ask.
Yes.
And probably by the time they're done, after meeting everybody, they, but...
I mean, are they asking like procedural questions? Are they asking like, why do you do this? Or...
I think most of the time, they're kind of sitting there in awe, because, and then the other thing is, sometime in county commissioners meeting, you've got, you, you've got to watch it, because sometimes people come, and some people can get upset in meetings. And so we try to, try to keep good control where they don't, they don't see that quite as much.
They don't get turned off by all these, all the people screaming and yelling. And so, so they're, they attend a, the commission meeting. Then what do they do?
Well, after the meeting, I call ahead on the Friday before the meeting, and we send out a letter to all the officials, elected officials in the courthouse stating, we have...
The courthouse is like your town hall, your county hall, city hall, right?
Well, most, almost all the public officials are, have an office there at the county courthouse.
All right.
So it's convenient. And so I send a letter to them, letting them know, we have ex-student coming.
Right.
Be prepared to tell them what your job is, and the importance of your job, and how it affects these people, these students as they grow up.
Yeah.
And so we go to the auditor, we go to the clerk, we go to the assessor, we go to, in Tar Court, it's probation officer.
Okay.
You know. And then the last, the last stop is usually with the judge.
Okay.
And sometimes if there's a court case going on, and it's open, you know, in child's cases, you can't be in there.
Can't do it, right, sure.
But if we have a regular case going on, we have them go in and sit in on a case, and they get to see how that process works.
Okay. What's the stop the kids are most excited about? What have you heard? Like, what's the, what's the feedback?
I think the biggest thing is riding in the police car. That's one of the things. No, but I, I think sitting there...
Pick them up, drive, hey, there's the county clerk, so now we're going to drive you around in the police car for a while.
Right. But to be sitting there, right there in the middle, right where it's going on, is, is you can't get no closer than that.
No, I suppose not. And what's the, you know, what's the takeaway for the kids?
The takeaway from the kids is they, they learn how government works by sitting in a Commissioners Meeting. Number two, they learn about all the offices in the courthouse, and how they could impact them in their future decision-making.
Any of these kids turn out to be summer interns, or, you know, political science majors, or I guess that they're too young, a six-year-old to be the next mayor? But what's the follow-up?
Well, I see, I see a lot of them, and I know them, and they've turned out to be pretty good people in the community.
Good.
And what I'm watching, I approach some of them, trying to get them involved to be future leaders. And as far, you know, they start off as a precinct committee, even something small, and let them build off of that. But the whole thing is, is if we can educate these young people in how government works for them, not against them.
Right.
And they have more, more understanding how each office holder works, and the value of that is very important as far as their future life.
Well, you know, speaking for myself, you know, and nobody grows up saying, I want to be a county clerk. I want to be a county tax, tax assessor. Do you think you're getting some kids, if not excited about it, like interested in it, or open to it?
The biggest impact, I think, on them is, and also, we get sent them a certificate that they can use as they've completed Commissioners Mentoring Program, that they can use. And little things like that are important also, and someone put in for something at school, and they've been through this program with the county commissioners and, and that. So...
Looks good on your resume when you're applying to college, Notre Dame, for example? Things like that. And how many kids have gone through this program total? Do you, can you guess?
I'd say probably 25.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Have you thought about expanding it, or...
Yeah, we...
Do you have the capacity for that?
We, well, here's the current thing, with the current Secretary of State of Diego Morales, who's a friend of mine, I expressed to him, there's also another program called Chairman Mentoring Program that we have, which is another, another different situation. But I've been talking to the Secretary of State, I've known him for years, he just got elected. And I'm trying to take my different programs I have for youth and develop them on a state level.
Okay.
And these things will engage these young people, and it will hopefully give them some type of a more education of how government works, and hopefully find future leaders. I mean, they're, they're out there.
Yes. Well, they have to be.
Yeah, they have to be.
Well, this does sound like a, a good government program to get people excited about good government. What else is going on? What else you, what else you working on?
I also have a Chairman Mentoring Program.
Okay.
I am also Republican Chairman of the county.
All right.
And again, I seek for young people who want to be involved. So I went to the state of Indiana, and I started this called Chairman Mentoring Program. As county chair, I wanted them engaged in the political process on Election Day. And so after speaking with the state of Indiana, Election Division, I had that approved.
Okay.
On Election Day, you can't go in and out of any polling place. You can only go in and out of the polling place you're voting.
Right.
And that's the limit.
Okay.
With the program I started, we have 17 precincts in our county.
So we don't say vote early and often in your, in your town?
No.
Okay, good.
We, we, as a state, a friend of mine started the Election Day Voting ID, where you carve voter ID law.
Okay.
Todd Rakita, who was our Secretary of State, now he's Attorney General for the state of Indiana, and a former U.S. Congressman, he started the voter election law that you were required to have photo ID. That's been adopted in many, many states. But what I want to do, I want to take young people and have them involved on Election Day to see everything that happens.
Okay.
As I said before, you can't go in and out of polling places. It gets a lot.
Are they old enough to be poll workers and do stuff like that?
There's another program there, too.
All right.
And so what we do on Election Day, if I'm not running for office, I can't do it when I'm running for office, because I can't go in and out of polls.
Because you can't, right.
And right now, all, right now, I am a, I'm the candidate for the 42nd House race for the state of Indiana.
Oh, you're going to, you're, you're running for state office?
Now, I should win this state, this state position.
Okay.
I'm serious.
Okay.
But, so what we do with the students is, I have, again, have the school...
How long have you been a county commissioner?
Ten years. Been elected my third term.
Oh, my. All right.
I've been a county chairman for 20 years.
Okay.
Vermaine County had no one elected. No one, no Republicans at all elected in 40 years. I was the first Republican elected a countywide seat in 40 years. Since then, I've took every office except two. So I'm enemy number one.
Okay.
But back to my Commissioners, my Chairman's Program, being a chairman, I talked to the state of Indiana, and I said, how can I grant, how can you grant me access to take these students in every polling place?
Yep.
They said I can assign those students as poll book holders and give them the title of that.
Yeah.
And I can take them any polls.
Okay.
So we start the day off in the morning, and I go and take them to every poll in entire county. We go in, we check and see how many people vote, not how, who voted. There's a data sheet there that says how many people voted. We keep track of that. We make reports. We go in, usually have a nice lunch, a local place provides a nice lunch for all of us to go.
Okay. And do the, in places where the vote is not as strong, do you quickly mobilize, knock on doors, get out the vote?
No, because I can't do anything like that.
Okay.
When I'm taking a student, it has nothing to do with politics.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it has nothing to do with me trying to get more people to vote for me or any...
No, no, I'm just saying, just get, get, you know, don't forget to vote, don't forget to vote. I mean, I've, I've certainly worked elections and on, on Voting Day, you know, don't go, please make sure you get out and vote.
But to take a student and put them in some way of, of doing that would, you know, it would be political.
I know that you said you're the Republican Chair, and you're doing this at the Republican Chairman's Office. The kids that you're recruiting, Democrats, Republicans, just any kids?
They have no political affiliation to that.
Okay, all right.
So they're, they're a neutral, they're neutral. So what I do, I take them with me, and we go in every polling place, we take and keep track of how the data, what's going on, we go have a good meal.
Yeah.
We also go into the Election Division.
Okay.
And we have three people on that, would be the county clerk, Republican, and a Democrat appointed those positions. And they're accounting, you know, they're doing the stuff. I take them in, introduce them, everybody in, in the clerk's office, and they see how that's going on.
Yeah.
The press usually shows up every time, and there's a special on these young people involved in politics.
Right.
And so they get to see the whole process.
Right. I was going to say, I mean, that's, that's an incredible, you know, that's an incredible day.
But you can't, but you can't take anybody in and out of polling places.
Yeah.
So I got this special exemption from the state of Indiana that gave me permission to do this.
Right. Because they're kids, they're learning, they're, they're not campaigning.
Right.
Right? And they're, they are, I guess, essentially kind of almost poll watchers.
Yeah, they're like poll watchers.
Right.
And so, but they get the experience of going in and out every poll, which you can't.
And what's the, what's the reaction like from the school, from the, from the community?
You know, it's, it's good. It's always good. We won, like I said, we won, that's another program I talked briefly about, too, that takes into that.
You can talk about all the good government projects you want.
Okay, I'm going to talk.
It's because we're the Good Government Show. All right.
So, but we take those students, and they get to actually see how government works that day during the election.
Okay.
They get to go to polling place and see how they, you know, the voting process and everything. And it just takes a complete picture of how voting works that day.
Yeah.
The other program we have is, years ago, during Todd Rakita's administration, Secretary of State, probably 12 years ago, they started a program called Election Day Live. And the program, no one did anything with it. But I took it, and I got it to the place where I had a stu-, the program is 16 half-year-old, 17-year-old kids can work the polls.
All right.
Okay.
As poll workers, as checking in, signing your, making, checking your ID, checking your signature, helping you put your, I don't know how you vote there, but how to assisting in the actual voting process, that sort of thing.
So, so what we did, the program was approved by the state of Indiana, but then you had to go before the Election Board.
Yeah.
It had to be unanimous decision by your local Election Board to, to start the program.
Okay.
It was passed. So we started this program called Election Day Live, and I started it and have these students working. It's not that the student works, the student gets paid.
Even better.
It's got to have a permission slip by the parents.
Yep.
And the local school has got to let them out. And they get paid $175 working out.
Oh, that's a, that's a nice, and, and most schools are closed on Election Day anyway, aren't they?
No, ours not, no.
I'm in New York City.
No.
Election Day, schools are closed, mostly because that's where they do the voting.
Yeah. They're open all day.
For the big national elections.
So what we do, then the, then the student has to, the big thing is the student, and when we talk to them, we say, listen, you cannot miss this.
No.
You can't sleep in, you can't call in sick, because the sheriff's going to come and get you.
And then you won't be sitting up front, in the front seat that day, maybe. So, what are the kids saying? What's the feedback you get from them?
Well, they usually say it's a long day.
Sure.
Because they have to be there like 5:30 in the morning, and they don't get a leave till 6 o'clock. And they've got to stay off their phones.
Yeah, that's what kills them.
Torment.
Yeah.
But they...
What time do your polls close?
At 6 o'clock.
Oh, at 6:00 P. Well, that's not bad.
6:00 to 6:00 P. And we provide them meals, so there's no reason for them to leave. But, but it get, they are actually, there's only one thing they cannot be in a poll, they cannot be a judge.
Okay.
They can't be a...
A supervisor.
Yeah, they can't be, they can't be the...
That makes sense.
What is it? It's not the judge, it's the...
It's the supervisor, the person who's in charge of that polling place.
They can work all the other place, all the other polls, but they can't operate in that.
But what are they, what's the feedback from them? Okay, it's a long day, but what do they, what do they think of the process? I mean, do you think you've, do you think that this program has helped kids feel like, oh, elections are free, are fair, everything's, you know, I see how it works?
I think it lets them know there is a value of an election.
Okay.
That's something we have right now. There's so much people being, saying, well, my vote don't count.
Yes.
I ran for office in the city of Clinton. I lost by one vote.
That's rough.
And you know what I did?
You voted for the other guy.
No, no. I, they asked me if I was going to file for a recount, and I said, there's no way I want to file for a recount. I believe the process works, and it does right. Why should I debate it?
Okay.
And so, you know, you've got to believe in the process. If you don't believe in the process, then, you know, because people think my vote does not count.
Yes.
And it does count.
And you're living proof. I lost by one vote, yeah. But do they come away and say, oh, I see how elections work. Okay, yeah, it is a fair process. It is, it does work.
I think they do, because it also depends on what role they played during that election, if they are a judge or a clerk, because, you know, they do different processes there, and different responsibilities. But that's all been featured. If you Google this information, you'll see where it's all out there.
All right. Well, I, I hear you're doing good work for getting students and youth involved and excited about good government. So I want to find out what your thoughts are on good government. After you get done with this episode, hear more good government stories with our friends at How to Really Run a City, former mayors Kasim Reed of Atlanta and Michael Nutter of Philadelphia, and their co-host, journalist and author Larry Platt, talk with guests and other mayors about how to really get stuff done in cities around the nation. Check them out where you're listening now or through their nonprofit news site, thephiladelphiacitizen.org/podcasts. So we have a questionnaire here. Are you ready? Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
All right. You said three terms as county commissioner?
Correct.
And now you're running for state office?
Correct.
Define good government.
Good government is open and transparent and communicates with people, and concerned, and has responsibility to the voters.
Okay. How do you judge your success or lack thereof? Not just, you know, elections, that's every four years, but week to week, day to day? How do you know if you're doing a good job?
As far as county chairman, in 2020, Vermaine County has never had a complete election. There was always gaps in, in, in offices, and not a complete field of the ballot. In 2020, I as Republican chairman searched and found highly qualified candidates, people who were educated, people who knew whatever they were being elected for. I put them all in those positions. Vermaine County voted for 100% of everyone I put on that ballot. It was a total sweep of the entire county that was based on the work that I did to find people in that county that was good candidates that could do something in government.
So on that day, you felt like you'd done a good job?
It was amazing. It was amazing.
Most of the other times, you know, when you don't have big watershed events, how do you know if you've done a good job?
Well, I, I go back and look at, at the approval of the people.
Okay.
This last election, I was bombarded. I had filed lawsuits against me. It was a roughest election that probably anyone ever went through in their life.
Okay.
And they was bound and determined since I had cleaned the slate that I was arch enemy number one in our county.
Yes.
But I kept my mouth shut and I won anyway.
Okay, alright.
And so the approval of the people is, to me, is still there regardless of 10 or 12 people that.
If, if people feel like you're not doing a good job, or if anybody in government's not doing a good job, you know, not just elections, what should they do?
They should call up that person, talk to them directly.
Yeah.
I have issues come up that if people have posted things on, on social media, I call them up. And I say, listen.
Are they surprised?
Most time they are.
Yeah.
But they, they, they're not, they're not used to that someone in authority calling them up and actually concerned about what they think. And many times, even if they posted things negative about, I end up having a friend out of that because, hey, he came and talked to me and he's open and he's transparent.
Alright. What would you like to see people do if they don't like the way things are going?
Vote. Vote. There's an answer to term limits. Everybody says about term limits, they want to get rid of term limits. Just vote them out.
Yeah.
I mean, it's that simple.
Yes.
I mean, but there, there might be some people that are doing a great job and term limits gets rid of them. So, I mean, and some people have been in government long enough that, you know, they, they develop good things.
Yep.
You know, I mean, relationships and, and, and they can do things done where someone new coming in, they got to start all over.
So vote.
Yep.
Again, three terms as a county commissioner, what would you like people to know from the inside about government and how government works? What should they know that they don't know?
Well, the whole perception of government don't work is wrong.
Well, that's why we're here at the Good Government Show, to help that. So what could you add to this?
It's just an open communication. When you, when you see that something happened in the community, many times, your thoughts and what you think is not correct. And many times, it's motivated by people who just don't like certain people being elected.
Yeah.
But what I encourage you, call that person up, if you're an elected official, call them up and say, I just want to talk to you. Go find out the facts. I started a new thing in our county that I got, when our, end of my, end of our meetings, I always have an open chair there. And I've started this, the open chair. Anybody out there that wants to come up and talk to me, because I have a lot of signing of papers and, and anybody, if you have a question, come and ask me about it. I will give you the facts and you can sit right beside me and talk to me anytime.
You are out in the community. One of the things about county government is that it is, many people say it's, it's the government that's closest to the people.
Correct.
Are you at the gas station? Are you at the baseball field? Are you at the football, the high school football game on Friday night? Are you out and accessible and do people stop you?
Sure, they'll do it all the time. I even pastor a local church.
Yeah.
Developing my time of giving and that, and helping seeing that, that work. So.
So after church, is it more about church or is it more about government?
Well, I try to stay out of that, you know, I don't want to bring politics into, into your church, but you, you just tell them what the facts are and let them make their own determination.
So who's your political hero? Who do you look up to? Who inspired you?
Who inspired me?
To do all this?
One day I walked to the local fair one day.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Churchy was there.
Mrs.?
Mrs. Churchy.
Okay.
Now she's 96.
Okay.
And she said, hey, you want to get involved in government, in politics. Her son was running for sheriff.
Okay.
And that's when it all started.
Okay.
And what's unique is.
Obviously, Mrs. Churchy is influential to you.
She started me.
Yeah. Who is she?
She is.
For those of us who don't know her.
She, as I county chairman, she was my vice chairman at 90 some years old.
Oh my.
She was the oldest one to be elected to county, to city seat in probably the history of Vermaine County.
Oh my, 90?
Yeah, she's 90, she's 96 now.
Alright.
But she.
60 years ago, she could have run for president, who knows?
But see what happened? It's unique in her life. When I became county chairman, there was no Republicans elected any seat. In her lifetime, her husband was sheriff.
Yeah.
Vermaine County politics was Republican orientated. It all went away. I told her 20 years ago, and I said, Lorena, I said, in, in my lifetime, in your lifetime, I want you to see the return of Republican Party. That night in 2020, when we sat there and counted the votes, seen the votes come in, I told Lorena, I said, it happened.
Okay.
The return of the party.
Alright. So she is your, Mrs. Churchy?
Yeah.
Alright. Was this something you always aspired to? I mean, what got you to get other than her? Was this something you thought about? Did you grow up wanting to be president of the United States?
Well, I always thought the world could be better. And a lot of people say you can't change the world.
However?
You can. It might be a small world, but you can change the world. You can make a difference in the future of our county, you know. And I, you know, I worked in many, many different elections. I mean, Mike Pence, a friend of mine, worked at Trump, I went to Daniels, I went to all those over the years. I worked in all the campaigns. But my inspiration to me was I was start already doing things. I did a lot of community projects in the county. I mean, I got my own excavating business. And so I'd go out and do different projects in the county to help local organizations. I loved doing that.
Yeah.
And when I did that, it got me to the front that people are saying, well, you know, why don't you go ahead and run for office? Because I was proven, you know, in, in what I've done. And that's the problem we have today. If you're not, if you're not a servant before you become elected, you'll never be a servant to the people.
Okay, alright.
And the other thing, in local government, state government, is we have people that get elected to state government that go from here to state government, and that's not good. You need to go through the process. I've been through the process of local government. I know how county government works.
Right.
So therefore, when I go to state government, I understand how it needs to work below me. It's very important to know that.
So I have never been to your town? I have never been to northern Indiana? I think I was in Indianapolis once for about a day. Take me out. Where are we going? What are we having? What's the dish of, of, of Vermilion County? What is it that everybody eats?
Yeah, you go to Clinton City. The St. Clinton is called, every year we have the Little Italy Festival.
The what festival?
Little Italy.
Say it again?
Little Italy Festival in Clinton.
Little Italy, okay.
And.
I'm from Brooklyn, be careful with Italian food.
So anyway, that's a big deal. And another thing what I've started too, is the first race on the Wall Base River, I've started that four years ago.
Okay.
No one has navigated the Wall Base River from, from a standpoint of an event.
Okay.
And I started that event four years ago and it's canoe and kayak race from Mottazuma, Indiana to Clinton, Indiana.
Alright.
Weekend before election.
Alright, well, we got off topic here. This is, this sounds fun, but what are we having? What are, let's eat. What are we doing?
We would usually go eat something probably Italian there in local town.
Okay.
Or go up north and eat at Cover Bridge Restaurant, chicken and noodles and, or staple things that we all eat usually.
Like what? What else? What are the staples of your county? That's what I'm asking.
Cheeseburger and fries. Cheeseburger and fries. I mean, that's, that's the.
Alright, that's it. Basic stuff.
Yeah, basic stuff.
Okay. You've talked about a few projects. This is the Good Government Show. We bring it back to good government. Tell me about a good government project you're working on now you're excited about.
Good government project right now that I'm working on, just a plain project?
Yep.
Okay. We currently have our ambulance service and we contracted out.
Your ambulance service, okay.
And so it's a government subsidized because there's not enough runs in our county, so we have to subsidize the service. Cause larger ambulance service make enough runs, they can make so.
Sure.
What we've done is, I've just been working on for two years, developing two brand-new ambulance facilities for our county that will be there that we can own. And in the future, if we contract out ambulance service, they don't have to come find their own place. There's always a facility.
Okay.
What was unique that just happened?
And I would imagine that leads to quicker response times.
Yes. And so, but what happened is, we took and, and, problem in counties is, I found out, is they don't dream. They don't, they're not ready for things. They, they come along and they, they get a grant and they say, oh, I got a grant, I got to go do something about it.
Right.
Well, I started, what I'm starting to do now is we're developing what we want, our dream, and having it designed and setting on a shelf for future.